The August 13, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 3313.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mr. Wilson, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner?
Here.
Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Jezling?
Present.
Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Tuttle, recorded absent.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of Mary Tuttle, Mr. Tuttle, our Board President's wife? Thank you. I would like to welcome everyone to the August 13, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each Board Member has received, for their review and consideration, the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the Board's approval via the District's Paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can assess the agenda through the school district's website. The agenda is available through the district website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the Board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the Board entertains comments for the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the Board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the Board on any subject, whether it is on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the Board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes, and please address questions to the President. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel 1026 in Mentor and Channel 1025 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. At this time, it is asked for approval of the minutes of the July 9, 2019 Regular Board Meeting and the July 23, 2019 Special Board Meeting.
So moved.
Well, second, however, I wasn't at the July 9 meeting, but I was at the Special Board meeting. So, Dan, how do I respond?
Should we split them?
Split them? Okay.
Either we can vote on them separately or just abstain.
From both?
For both.
That's fine.
Please call the roll.
Do you want a second?
So, okay, so, second.
All right. Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Abstain.
Mr. Buckley?
On the agenda is hearing of the public on agenda items. Hearing or seeing none, let's move to the Superintendent's Report and Recommendations.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Vice President and Members of the Board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 5A1 through 5A6.
So moved.
Please call the roll. Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
And I love the Bear Program that Mrs. Marthy and her colleagues got funding for, for Ridge. Sounds very exciting. I think it's going to be a very nice program for the kids, for our kindergarten.
Agreed. Thank you. Mr. Vice President and Members of the Board, this evening, we are pleased to recognize several staff members who are being honored for their commitment to their schools and their students. We will begin with our Excellence in Teaching Award winners. Ms. Jezling, will you please join me at the podium? The Excellence in Teaching Award recognizes certified staff members who demonstrate exemplary qualities in their profession and are involved in activities which reflect professional commitment. This evening's recipients represent the best at Mentor Schools. It is our pleasure to honor the winners of the 2019 Excellence in Teaching Award. One at a time, we're going to call up, first, Mr. Adam Dugus. Mr. Dugus was an instructional coach at Hopkins the past few years, and this year will be a second-grade teacher at Lake Elementary. Mr. Dugus's enthusiasm for teaching is contagious. He motivates the most reluctant learner, whether adult or child, into trying something new and taking risks in their learning. He continues to model lifelong learning by actively participating in a multitude of in-services. When he first learned about virtual reality, the excitement he had for the possibilities for that particular program for the classroom was uncontainable. Teachers, students, and parents clearly admire and respect Mr. Dugus. Congratulations.
No problem. Good job.
Great job. Thank you.
Next, we have Mrs. Lynn Foer, Intervention Specialist Orchard Hollow. Mrs. Foer has been an Intervention Specialist in Mentor since 1995, working with special needs students, and most recently with students who have learning and behavioral challenges. Mrs. Foer gravitates towards students who need a caring adult, and she goes above and beyond to provide not only academic, but emotional support to students struggling in school. She is always willing to help, always willing to support students and teachers by creating and implementing visual schedules, behavioral checklists, and providing other behavioral and academic interventions. Mrs. Foer is an active member of the Building Crisis Response Team, as well as the Coordinator of the Building RTI Team. Congratulations, Mrs. Foer. Mrs. Harem is a high school counselor and department coordinator. She is dedicated to her profession and spends a lot of time, energy, and effort in building the master schedule. Mrs. Harem has shown tremendous leadership within the Guidance Department's PLCs, Professional Learning Communities. She oversees all student records to ensure students meet their graduation requirements at the high school, and oversees the College Career Program, College Career Plus Program. Mrs. Harem also initiated the Orientation Program for eighth-grade students who transitioned to Mentor High School. Congratulations, Annie.
Mr. Vice President and Members of the Board, nominations are also collected every
year for the Outstanding Service Award. To be selected for this award, a nominee must demonstrate enthusiasm for his or her responsibilities, a commitment to Mentor Schools, and have the respect of their colleagues, parents, and students. The winners selected this year fit that criteria perfectly. It is our pleasure to honor the winners of the 2019 Outstanding Service Awards. First up, we will recognize Ms. Melissa Guerrero, Classroom Assistant at Lake Elementary. Ms. Guerrero comes to work each day with a smile on her face and is always eager to support the staff and students at Lake Elementary. She is often responsible for providing support and interventions for students and always faces those challenges with a positive attitude, love, and compassion for the students. Ms. Guerrero has a strong rapport with the staff and students, and the students truly want to be around her. Next, we're honoring Ms. Marilyn Clace from Bellflower in the Nutrition Services Department. Mrs. Clace has a positive attitude and works well with all of her colleagues. Over the years, Mrs. Clace has worked hard to improve the efficiency of both packing lunches and serving them to students to ensure students have the maximum time possible to eat. Mrs. Clace has developed and maintains positive relationships with students, colleagues, administrators, and parents. Staff members often mention how much they enjoy working with her and what a great job she does. Congratulations. Next, Ms. Linda Music, Sterling Morton Elementary Classroom Assistant. Ms. Music has consistently demonstrated commitment and enthusiasm for her job and all members of the Orchard Hollow community, staff and students alike, far beyond what is expected of a typical classroom assistant. Ms. Music is always seeking ways to support more children within her schedule. She can easily be described as someone always looking for positive solutions versus complaining about problems. Ms. Music has led her colleagues in analyzing a workflow issue or situation such as lunchtime protocols and created solutions that have meaningful, positive outcomes. Congratulations. At the beginning, I made a mistake. I said Sterling Morton. It is Orchard Hollow.
Thank you so much. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Next up, Ms. Susan Powers, Classroom Assistant, Mentor High School. Ms. Powers has been a stabilizing and consistent voice as a classroom assistant and the liaison between the MRT program and Mentor High School. Her experience working with students in serious emotional issues never dampers her positive attitude. Ms. Powers works daily with students on their academics and has provided countless students with a safe space. Her willingness to go above and beyond to meet the needs of her students and support teachers who may have these students in class is admirable. Ms. Powers has a calming demeanor and a fantastic rapport with staff, students, and parents. Congratulations. Mr. Vice President and Members of the Board, we will now be recognizing five very important groups for their excellence in team collaboration, and this is the second year for this award. To be selected for the award, the team members must demonstrate enthusiasm for their responsibilities and a strong commitment to the school system. The team must also be respected by colleagues, parents, students, and must demonstrate strong collaborative skills. First up, from Ridge Elementary's third-grade team, Ms. Kristin Godeck and Elizabeth Finley. This team has flawlessly implemented strategies and techniques that show in their performance and behavior for their students. Ms. Godeck and Ms. Finley never turn down a challenge to implement a new idea, whether discovered by the district or one of their own. Their balance of confidence and humility is remarkable. The students in their classroom perform at the highest level, and they bring out the best in each of their students. Congratulations.
Very proud of you. Thank you so much. You're wonderful. You guys are great. So proud of you. Thank you. Very proud of you. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you.
Also, from Ridge Elementary, the fourth-grade team of Kelly Jerry, Jill Kilpeck, Lori McLaughlin, Katie Runyon, and Mackenzie Saywell. This past year, the fourth-grade team at Ridge used the closure of Garfield and Brentmore and the formation of Ridge Elementary to learn from each other, try new ideas, implement new curriculum, and build a strong foundation as a cohesive team focused on student success. This collaborative team created opportunities for all students to meet one another and develop grade-level expectations. The team demonstrates a huge commitment to the ideals of a responsive classroom, and the entire group exemplifies what it means to be lifelong learners, as they are always looking for opportunities to educate themselves. Congratulations to the fourth-grade team. Next up, our fourth-grade Talking Art Museum team from Sterling Morton. From the art educator there is Jackie Spattrino, fourth-grade teachers Lori Epler and Charlene Lorick, and our instructional coach, Mary Ann Tatarunas. This year marked the 12th year for the Talking Art Museum at Sterling Morton, but there is nothing old or stale about this annual tradition. The innovative project has evolved and challenged, changed each year to reflect the changing needs of students and the technologies available to students and teachers. The team is always looking for new and engaging ways to reach students and get them excited about art. In addition to their artwork, students create presentations such as written paragraphs, PowerPoint presentations, and, most recently, green screen videos to accompany student work. The end product is a room filled with well-executed and beautiful recreations of art masterpieces and students eager to share their learning with peers, family, and friends. Congratulations to this team.
Very proud of you. Thank you. So proud of you. You're wonderful. You guys are great. So proud of you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Wonderful. Thank you.
Next, we have the Lake Elementary Structured Language Team with Classroom Assistants Doreen Trimble and Holly Gladish, and Classroom Teacher Angela Schultz. The classroom assistants are take-charge individuals who have been in the autism unit for over 10 years. They love their job and love each and every one of the students they work with and have developed a family-like relationship with the classroom students and with Ms. Schultz. This team has always been willing to jump into their job headfirst without complaint. They are all able to implement new ideas and have come up with and are willing to sit in on planning meetings and IEP team meetings. They all, all three, have a smile on their face each and every day and often seek out opportunities for extra professional growth. Congratulations to this team. And finally, we have the Memorial School Nutrition Staff Team, Peggy Bones, Debbie Chakshi, Kathy Latino, Crystal Massiello, and Tracy Maithen. This team goes above and beyond every day to ensure the meals at Memorial have a variety of options and color and texture and meet the demands of the students. They are always raising the bar, and they are not afraid of a challenge and enjoy being part of the entire building atmosphere. The staff not only participates in all staff in services, but also all activities within the building. The team is always recognized in their tweet-outs for their meals of the day. The team gives presentations in classrooms, asks students for input on the menu, provides free taste testings, values the students, and understands the middle-school age group, as well as the diverse population and demographics they are working with. Congratulations to the Memorial Staff Nutrition Team.
So proud of you. Will you make a toast to our french fries?
Okay. Great job. Great job. Thank you.
For all of those award winners so far this evening, let's give a congratulations. At this time, I would like to invite Mrs. Burnett to the podium to join Ms. Jezling and to recognize our newly designated Master Teachers.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, Members of the Board, Mr. Porter, and Mr. Wilson. The Ohio Department of Education defines a Master Teacher as an educator who demonstrates excellence inside and outside of the classroom through consistent leadership and focused collaboration to maximize student learning. A Master Teacher strives for distinguished teaching and continued professional growth as specified by the Ohio Standards for the Teaching Profession. One, teachers understand student learning and development and respect the diversity of the students they teach. Teachers know and understand the content area for which they have instructional responsibility. Teachers understand and use varied assessments to inform instruction, evaluate, and ensure student learning. Teachers plan and deliver effective instruction that advances the learning of each individual student. Teachers create learning environments that promote high levels of learning and achievement for all students. Teachers collaborate and communicate with students, parents, other educators, administrators, and the community to support student learning. Teachers assume responsibility for professional growth, performance, and involvement as an individual and as a member of our learning community. To be designated as a Master Teacher in Ohio, eligible educators must achieve, clearly achieve exemplary scores in the following areas: consistent leadership, focused collaboration, distinguished teaching, and continued professional growth. This year, we had eight staff members renew their Master Teacher designation, and we are very proud to have three new Master Teachers on staff. When I call your name, please come up. First, I'd like to introduce Kelly Berger, third-grade teacher at Lake Elementary. Next, I'd like to introduce Kimberly Cornacchio, kindergarten teacher at Lake Elementary. Next, I'd like to introduce Lauren Tanco, kindergarten teacher at Lake Elementary. Congratulations to all of our recipients, and we are appreciative and admire your growth mindset as an educator of Mentor Public Schools. Congratulations.
Mr. Vice President and Members of the Board, I am recommending approval of Agenda Item C1 related to Certified Personnel and C2 through C4, all related to Human Resource Matters, as well as the items listed on the addendum that was at your seat when you arrived this evening.
So moved. Second?
Please call the roll. Ms. Jezling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Vice President and Members of the Board, at this time, it is our privilege to introduce our newest staff members to Mentor Schools. Every year, we choose the best of the best, and this year is no exception. We are confident they will be outstanding teachers and staff members, and we are excited to have them join our Cardinal family. Mrs. Burnett, please join me as we make the presentations.
They're very excited. Good evening, Mr. Vice President, Members of the Board, Mr. Porter, and Mr. Wilson. This evening, I have the honor of introducing our new certified hires for the 1920 school year. I can assure you that each applicant went through a very rigorous interview process with multiple layers and has demonstrated to be the most highly qualified candidate for the position. I would first like to start off with Brad Burnanson. Brad completed his undergraduate degree at Ohio University in 2014 and obtained his Master's Degree from John Carroll University as a school psychologist. He completed his internship year with Rocky River School District and the last two years has been with Ravenna Schools. Brad studied abroad while in college and enjoyed spending time in Austria, Switzerland, Germany, and Italy, and we are very excited to welcome Brad as a school psychologist to Mentor High School. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Leanne Bussinger. Leanne completed her Bachelor's Degree in the area of Art Education from Bowling Green State University. She completed her student teaching at Rossford Junior High and Lake Elementary outside of Toledo. Leanne shared that she spent time working at Disney World a few years ago in Orlando, and she is very eager to start her career at Mentor Schools at Orchard Hollow Elementary and Memorial Middle School. Next, I'd like to welcome Kristin Carroll. Kristin received her Bachelor's Degree from Ursula and College and spent several years as a Title I teacher with Euclid City Schools. Last year, Kristin was the building substitute at Lake Elementary and completed a long-term assignment in fourth grade. She is proud to have three daughters that attend Mentor Schools, and her favorite summer activity is reading. This year, she is very excited and eager to officially join the Lake Elementary school staff as a fourth-grade teacher. Next, I'd like to introduce Allison Clifford. Allison received her Bachelor's Degree from Xavier University in 2014. She completed her student teaching in a preschool and kindergarten classroom in Cincinnati. Recently, she has been a preschool with Cleveland Metropolitan School District for the past five years. Allison has her children's yoga license, and this school year, we are excited to welcome her to Hopkins Elementary as a preschool teacher. Next, I'd like to introduce Dana Delgado. Dana received her Bachelor's Degree from Kent State University in 2001. Soon after, she relocated from Mentor, Ohio to Naples, Florida, and taught 11 years at the elementary level. Recently, Dana has worked for Chardon Schools and Willoughby Eastlake Schools. She's a vegetarian, loves to cook, and is joining the staff at Ridge Elementary as a fifth-grade teacher. Next, I'd like to introduce Lena Desapry. Lena received her Bachelor's Degree from John Carroll University in 2014 and completed her student teaching at her student teaching at Mayfield Middle School. Recently, Lena has been a 5th grade teacher for four years with Euclid City Schools. The summer has been busy for Lena with his wedding and a new job. Lena will be joining the Shore Middle School family as a math teacher this year. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Herb Getdill. Herb received his bachelor's degree from Cleveland State University and has recently been employed at Lake Erie College. He enjoys all sports and receives continuous compliments about how he is always smiling and happy, which is true. We are so excited that Herb will be launching our work with our seniors at Lake Erie College as the HVACR instructor this year. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Charlie Gibson. Charlie received his bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University in 2016 and completed his student teaching at Atsigo High School in the area of Biology. For the past three years, Charlie has been at Firelands High School. Charlie is proud to share that his grandparents graduated from Mentor High School and that he really enjoys all superhero movies. Charlie will be joining the Science Department at Mentor High School, teaching Physical Science and Biology. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Brittany Gray. Brittany received her bachelor's degree from Mercyhurst College in 2010 and completed her student teaching at Lincoln Elementary in Erie, Pennsylvania. She obtained her master's degree from Edinburgh in 2017. Recently, she has worked for Northeast School District and Beechwood City Schools. Brittany's interesting fact is that she enjoys swimming with stingrays while in the Cayman Islands. Brittany joins the Bellflower staff as a 5th grade teacher. Congratulations. They're all worried about what they wrote about their interesting fact. I don't tell them why. Sorry, guys. Next, I'd like to introduce April Haldina. April received her bachelor's degree from the University of Mount Union in 2015. She completed her student teaching with West Branch Schools. Her most recent teaching experiences include working for Mahoning County and last year completed a full-year long-term assignment at Orchard Hollow and Memorial Middle School as a traveling intervention specialist. April just recently wrote, sorry, completed her ninth half marathon. Orchard Hollow is very excited to welcome April back as a full-time intervention specialist this year. Congratulations. I'd like to introduce Cassie Hartman. Cassie graduated with her bachelor's degree from Ohio University in 2016. She completed her student teaching at East Elementary in Athens, Ohio. For the past three years, Cassie has completed several long-term substitute assignments at Memorial Middle School, Shore Middle School and Mentor High School. Cassie enjoys traveling to new places, kayaking and reading. This year, Cassie is super excited to join the math department at Shore Middle School. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Sarah Hartwig. Sarah received her bachelor's degree from Mount Union College in 2004 and obtained her master's degree from Aurora University in Illinois in 2008. She spent 15 years with Yorkville School District in Illinois and recently was with Constellation Schools in Ashtrabula County ESC. She recently got engaged to her fiancee, who she has known since her freshman year of college, and they just brought a new home this summer in Willoughby. Sarah will be joining the Bellflower staff and the Lake Elementary staff as the gifted intervention specialist. Congratulations. Haley Hauser, and she doesn't know this, she just got married and she's still under price, but I put underneath her married name from like two weeks ago. So come on up Haley, that's why I was thrown off. Haley obtained her bachelor's degree in 2017 from Cedarville University and student taught in a 2nd grade classroom in Forest Hill Public Schools. Soon after, she was hired as a full-time teacher with Forest Hill Schools. She recently got married, literally two weeks ago, moved to Ohio from Michigan and enjoys playing the cello. Haley joins the staff at Ridge Elementary as a 5th grade teacher. Congratulations. I'd like to introduce Lindsay Hessen, who's not with us this evening, she had tickets to The Lion King. I don't know why. Lindsay obtained her bachelor's degree from Youngstown State University in 2011. She completed her student teaching at Maplewood Middle School. Last year, Lindsay filled several long-term assignments and daily assignments with Mentor Schools. Lindsay enjoys taking walks, reading and spending time at her three children's sporting events. This year, Lindsay will be working with our high school students at CARES. Congratulations, Lindsay. Next, I'd like to introduce Jennifer Hiltonan. Jennifer obtained her bachelor's degree in 2007 from the University of Akron. She completed her student teaching at Angola Middle School in an 8th grade classroom. Jennifer received her master's degree from the University of Phoenix in 2012. Jennifer has experienced teaching out of state, but recently was with Euclid City Schools for the past four years. She hopes to write a children's book one day, but in the meantime, started a family woodworking business with her husband. Jennifer joins the Shore Middle School staff as an English Language Arts teacher this year. Congratulations, Jen. Next, I'd like to introduce Morgan Hall. Morgan received her bachelor's degree in 2016 from Kent State University and completed her student teaching at Chestnut Elementary in Painesville. She spent a year completing long-term assignments in Mentor and last year worked at Harvey High School as an intervention specialist. She enjoys going to the movies and vinyl records. This year, she will be joining the Sterling Morton Elementary staff as an intervention specialist. Welcome, Morgan. Next, I'd like to introduce Kristi Klesurik. Kristi conducted her student teaching at Perry Elementary in a 3rd grade classroom. She received her bachelor's degree from Notre Dame College, where she played soccer while obtaining her teaching license. She has taught preschool at Notre Dame Elementary and last year was a kindergarten teacher at Lake Elementary. This year, she is at Sterling Morton as a 2nd grade teacher and she is a proud alum of Mentor High who married her high school sweetheart. Next, I'd like to introduce Eric Leniker. Eric obtained his bachelor's degree in Civil Engineering from Geneva College. He was proud to change his career to the field of education soon after. Eric obtained his master's degree in the area of Curriculum and Instruction from Kent State University. He taught for two years in Texas and recently spent the last 18 years with Euclid City Schools. He's a proud dad of his adopted two boys and Eric will join the Shore Middle School staff along with the Memorial Middle School staff as an instructional coach for our district. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Crystal Namick. Crystal completed her bachelor's degree from Cleveland State University. She completed her student teaching as an intervention specialist at North High School. For the past year and a half, Crystal completed a long-term assignment at Shore Middle School. She enjoys traveling, spending quality time with her family and is eager to begin her full-time assignment at Shore Middle School as an intervention specialist this year. Congratulations, Crystal. Next, I'd like to introduce Lucy Ott. Lucy graduated with her bachelor's degree from Mercyhurst College and completed her student teaching at McDowell High School in the Field of Business Education. She received her master's degree from Ashland University and was with Euclid City School for 20 years. Recently, Lucy has been with Mentor School's CTE Department as a marketing and recruitment specialist. Lucy's interesting fact is that she was born in England. Lucy joins the CTE Department as the networking and IT security teacher and will be housed at Lakeland Community College. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Brianna Palco. Bree obtained her bachelor's degree in 2016 from Bowling Green State University. She completed her student teaching at Christie Elementary and was with Eastwood Local Schools for the past two years. Bree recently got engaged while she was traveling in New Zealand and she will be joining the preschool staff at Hopkins Elementary this year. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to introduce Shayna Pancheck. Shayna obtained her bachelor's degree from the University of Mount Union in 2016. She completed her student teaching at Memorial Middle School and soon after completed a long-term position with Willoughby Eastlake Schools. Recently, she has been with Fairport Harbor Schools as an elementary health and physical education teacher. She enjoys doing and coaching CrossFit as a hobby. Shayna joins the staff at Memorial Middle School as a health and physical education teacher. Welcome, Shayna. Laura Pankava. Laura completed her bachelor's degree and master's degree from Ursulon College. Laura spent 12 years working for the Cleveland Catholic Diocese. She was a building substitute at Ridge Middle School during the 1718 school year and completed several long-term assignments with Mentor Schools. Last year, Laura was at Shore Middle School and Memorial Middle School as an ELA teacher. In her free time, she enjoys being out on the water on jet skis. This year, we welcome Laura as a full-time teacher who will be at Shore Middle School and Mentor High School. Welcome. Next, I'd like to introduce Madison Rainey. Madison obtained her bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University in 2018 and completed her student teaching with Toledo Public Schools and Atsigo Local Schools. She was a district-wide and building, district-wide and building substitute for Mentor Schools last year. She enjoys golfing, has attended the Masters and has even met PGA golfer Jordan Spieth. Madison will start off her year as the CTE/ECE preschool teacher at Mentor High School. Congratulations. Next, I would like to introduce Kaylee Ross. Kaylee obtained her bachelor's degree from Ohio University in 2017 and completed her student teaching at Nelsonville York Elementary in a 1st grade classroom. For the past two years, she has been a substitute teacher with Mentor Schools and Willoughby Eastlake Schools. She enjoys attending and watching all Cleveland sports teams. Kaylee will be joining the 5th grade team at Hopkins Elementary this year. Welcome. Next, I would like to introduce Luke Stott. Luke obtained his bachelor's degree in 2012 from Kent State University and completed his student teaching with Beechwood High School and Adrian Elementary. He pursued his master's degree from Ursulon College while he was an intervention specialist with Ravenna High School for six years. Luke is proud to share that Mr. Porter was his middle school principal and that his previous head principal was his mother-in-law. Luke will be joining the staff at Bellflower Elementary and Fairfax Elementary as an intervention specialist. Welcome, Luke. Next, I would like to introduce Joanna Sullivan. Joanna just recently obtained her bachelor's degree from Kent State University and completed her student teaching with Crestwood High School and Magador Junior High this past spring. Joanna has a minor in dance and was in a professional division of a ballet company. She will be joining the staff at Shore Middle School as an English Language Arts teacher this fall. Congratulations, Joanna. Next, I would like to introduce Mackenzie Watson. Mackenzie obtained her bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University in 2014 and completed her student teaching at Toledo Prep. She spent five years in Arizona as a classroom teacher for the Glendale School District and last year was a 2nd grade teacher at Kirtland Elementary. Mackenzie recently enjoyed cliff jumping while in Jamaica. She joins the staff at Sterling Morton as a 3rd grade teacher. Welcome, Mackenzie. Next, I would like to introduce Christina Wilcox. Christina obtained her bachelor's degree from the Ohio State University in 2011 and her master's degree from the University of Cincinnati in 2017. She completed her student teaching with Gehanna School District in Columbus. Christina, for the past eight years, has been an intervention specialist at Euclid High School. She enjoys spending time hiking with her family and this summer took a trip to Yellowstone National Park. Christina is excited to join the staff at Mentor High School as an intervention specialist. Welcome. Next, I would like to introduce Ben Yanasko. Ben obtained his bachelor's degree in 2018 from Cleveland State University. He completed his student teaching with Painesville City Schools at Heritage Middle School. For the past year, Ben has been a building substitute at Memorial Middle School and has completed several long-term assignments with Mentor Schools. Ben's interesting fact is that he is absolutely terrified of roller coasters. Ben will be joining the Memorial Middle School staff as an intervention specialist this year. Congratulations. Next, I would like to introduce Rosie Zimbina. Rosie obtained her bachelor's degree from Ashland University in 2011. She student taught at the 3rd grade level. She has spent time at Orchard Hollow Elementary as the building substitute and spent time at Willoughby Montessori Day School. Rosie has traveled cross-country in an RV visiting 20 states in four and a half weeks with 15 family members. This year, Rosie joins the staff at Orchard Hollow Elementary as a long-term 2nd grade teacher. Welcome, Rosie. Can we have one more hand for all of our new hires and then you can have your seat?
Again, welcome to our new staff. That was one of the hardest things they had to do this week, so congratulations again. At this time, we will hear briefly from two of our new administrators. Mrs. Burnett will introduce them.
Can Mrs. Stephanie Clodges please come up? Okay, Mrs. Stephanie Clodges, please come up. Stephanie received her bachelor's degree in Psychology from Penn State University and then pursued her master's degree in EDS from Edinburgh University. In 2018, she obtained a master's in Educational Administration from Cleveland State University. For the past four years, Stephanie has been a part of the staff at Mentor High School as a school psychologist. Just a few short weeks ago, Stephanie celebrated with getting married this summer. She is excited to join the administrative staff of Mentor Schools as the Special Education Supervisor.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, Members of the Board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. I wanted to take a minute to sincerely thank you for allowing me the opportunity to become a Special Education Supervisor at Mentor Schools. Over my last four years at Mentor High School as a school psychologist, I have really grown to love and respect what this district stands for. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to continue my, as I move into my new administration role, to continue my dedication to the district and its students. I'm so grateful to have been given this opportunity to continue my career and growth at Mentor Schools, and I can't wait to see what this school year holds.
Next, I would like to call up Ms. Sharon Blannick. Sharon received her bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University, and prior to Mentor Schools, she spent over 10 years as the Director at Little Scholars and Mentor. Sharon has been the lead We Care at Garfield Elementary and also at Ridge Elementary. Sharon enjoys making Christmas ornaments every year for her family and friends. We are very excited to welcome Sharon to our administrative team as the new We Care Coordinator for Mentor.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, Members of the Board, Mr. Porter and Mr. Wilson. I've spent most of my life involved with children and education. As a 10-year-old, I was the busiest babysitter in the neighborhood. I've raised two wonderful sons. I held almost every PTA board position through my children's elementary years. I taught preschool for over 15 years. I was a daycare administrator. And most recently, I was the We Care Lead at Garfield and Ridge. All these experiences and more have prepared me to be We Care Coordinator for Mentor Schools. Thank you to Mr. Porter and the administrative team for seeing my potential. Thank you, esteemed members of the school board, for giving me the opportunity to leave my mark on the lives of the young people in this community. I look forward to this next chapter of my career and the chance to work with this talented
Thank you, and that concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
At this time, we're going to take a five-minute break and then resume the meeting. Those of you that want to stay are welcome. Those of you that have things to do, like get your classrooms ready and the building ready, may leave. Have a good evening. The meeting is called back to order. It's time for Board of Education Reports and Recommendations, Section A, Business.
Yes, I can help. Every year, the Ohio School Boards Association conducts their annual business meeting where they set their annual legislative platform and conduct other organizational matters. They ask that each member district designate a delegate that will go and vote on behalf of the Board of Education for that various aspects of the legislative position to advocate for K-12 education and an alternate in event that the delegate is unable to attend.
I've done it every year. I wouldn't mind continuing as delegate. Does anyone have any objections?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
An alternate.
Do we need an alternate?
Yeah, I'll volunteer, sure.
Okay. Thanks, Dean.
All right. And it doesn't require a vote. The Chair can make the designation, so we're all set.
Do we need to vote on the resolution for the sale of...
Yes, and Item 2, in accordance with the Higher Revised Code, and part of our sustainability program for one-to-one devices, we're requesting authority to conduct a public auction for used student devices, MacBooks and iPads as listed. The cumulative value is in excess of $10,000, which is the threshold for a formal auction. The proceeds are designated to help fund the continuing repurchase of devices for students. So we ask that the Board authorize the auction. We will be utilizing the services of an online auction company, but still required to do the proper advertising and notice for the sale.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jizling?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Legislative report, Mrs. Briner?
Well, our Governor Mike DeWine's first budget was due on June 30th, and that bill, Senate Bill 171, was approved. Two weeks later, lawmakers passed House Bill 166. DeWine signed it into law with 25 vetoes. Among the changes in the bill include a funding guarantee that for fiscal years 2020 and 2021, school districts will receive no less than the amount of state funds they received for fiscal year 2019, $675 million in health and wellness funds allocated based on the district's poverty percentage, $38.5 million for school districts that experienced enrollment growth between fiscal year 2016 and 2019, a one-year moratorium on the establishment of new academic distress commissions, a new system of high school graduation requirements effective beginning with the class of 2023, a new legislative study committee to make recommendations to the state report card, an extension of the current moratorium on the requirement for storm shelters in school projects to September 15, 2020, and a requirement to issue a study on the issue, an expansion of the traditional and income-based educational choice scholarship program, a $20 million program to provide funding to districts to purchase school buses, a provision prohibiting a reduction in busing after the first day of the school year, the elimination of the Joint Education Oversight Committee. Also, despite the state budget bill's creation of the one-year moratorium on establishing new academic distress commissions, lawmakers appear poised to make changes to the controversial state takeover plan. The Senate is expected whole hearings as early as August. Some recently introduced legislation, House Bill 310 introduced by Rep. Dave Greenspan, Republican of Westlake, to enact the Ohio Anti-Bullying and Hazing Act with regards to school discipline and bullying and hazing policies at public schools and colleges, and Senate Bill 171 introduced by Senators Matt Dolan, Republican of Chagrin Falls, and Sean J. O'Brien, Democrat of Bezetta, to enact a temporary 17-day state budget. That's all I have. Does anybody wish to add anything? Any comments?
Thanks, Mrs. Briner.
Thank you.
Item 7, Chief Financial Officers' Report and Recommendations.
Yes, I recommend the Board approve Action Item 7A through 7F, the routine monthly financial transactions, the statements, approval of investments, interfund transfers, appropriation modifications, supplemental appropriations, and the annual student activity purpose goals and budgets.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Ms. Jizling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Thank you. That completes my item.
Is there any unfinished business for the Board? Any new business? Hearing of the public.
They left.
They left. We are now going to move into executive session to discuss the sale of real estate and complete the superintendent's evaluation. I don't anticipate us coming back into vote. Do we need to move for a temporary adjournment or...
Yes, we do need a motion.
So moved.
Ms. Jizling?
Yes.
Mrs. Briner?
Yes.
Mrs. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.[1798.38]